Welcome to the special meeting of the Bakersfield City Council. Now speaking, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 4:00 PM Special City Council Meeting of March 8th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we also have not received any public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Closed session, item 3A, Conference with Labor Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6.
Thank you.
Move to closed session.
Move to closed session. We're convening the 3:00, 4:00 o'clock Special City Council meeting. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item on closed session this evening. It was Conference with Labor Negotiator, and by a unanimous vote of 5-0 with Councilmembers Weir and Smith absent, staff was given direction. Thank you.
Thank you. We stand adjourned at 5:29.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 Regular City Council Meeting of March 8th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I am here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Sorry to keep you waiting. It's a pleasure to welcome all of you, and thank you to the students from Professor Holmes' class at Bakersfield College, and then also thank you to the representative from Assemblywoman Jasmine Baines' office for being here, and to all of you, thank you for being here. We had the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Nate Coleman. He's the pastor of discipleship and outreach at the Bridge Bible Church to offer the invocation. We just so appreciate the church's engagement with our community. Following the invocation, the Centennial High School Virtual Enterprise Business Team will lead us in the pledge. This is a really, really special group. First place winner at the California Virtual Enterprise Business Plan Competition in January, beating out 40 schools in California. The team developed Go Gather, a subscription box service that provides monthly activity boxes for groups of friends which help teens get off their phones and socialize in person. The entire Go Gather team will be traveling to New York in April to attend the Virtual Enterprise Three-Day Youth Business Summit where they'll represent Centennial, Bakersfield, and California on a national level. So we'll introduce them more specifically in a while, but would you all please stand for the pledge and invocation? Invocation, please. Pastor.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, for this wonderful city that we get the privilege to live in. I thank you for the city council members who are here, the other city officials, the mayor as well, and each of the citizens who were present. We thank you for each of these city council members who you have appointed to help lead this city forward. I pray that you give them vision for this city, to help see it flourish. I pray that you give them wisdom for the work that they're doing. God, I pray in the mundane parts of their responsibilities and the exciting parts that you would give them a joy for the city that they get the chance to serve and the community that they get the chance to be a part of. Heavenly Father, would you use their work tonight and ongoing to comfort those who are hurting, to heal those who are broken, to bring hope to those who are hopeless? We thank you for them. We pray you bless them in all their decisions and their endeavors tonight. Would your justice, mercy, and grace reign here as it is in Bakersfield. Amen.
Amen. Go ahead and come up here for the pledge, please.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated in Golden Hawks if you stay there for just a minute. We are so proud of you. And Assistant Principal Carrie Palacios, we're glad to have you here. Love you to introduce the students, but on behalf of the City of Bakersfield, it's my honor to be able to present the certificate of recognition to Centennial High School Virtual Enterprise Business Team in honor of Centennial High School's Virtual Enterprise Business Team's company, Go Gather, winning first place in the 2023 California Virtual Enterprise Business Plan Competition, and in recognition of your hard work and outstanding efforts to strive for excellence, congratulations on your exceptional accomplishment.
As the proud Assistant Principal of Centennial, I'd like to introduce these students to you. We've got Aiden Stovall. We've got Vaishvi Joshi. We've got Juliana Gosinech, and then we've got Tharun Thagaranjan.
And does anybody wish to make a quick comment on behalf of your group?
Vaishvi? Sure. So, hello, guys. My name is... Oh, okay. Hello, my name is Vaishvi, and I'm part of the Centennial Virtual Enterprise Team. We've had a great season this year. We started developing our business in early October, and we've really seen it blossom. Every single one of us have positions in our team. I'm the chief executive officer. We have our CFO, our CMO, and our COO, and every single day we go in there with the mindset that we're going to win, and I think that's turned out great, and we're going to keep that same mindset going on to April when we go to New York City. So, thank you, everyone.
We wish you the best.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gray.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I would just like to say to you, young people, it's so, hang on, don't walk out, I'm talking to you. It's so refreshing to see young people that have that look of professionalism about them, that they're achieving excellence, they're striving towards excellence. You're never going to strive, you're never going to, you know, have perfection, but to see this group of young people standing just so tall against some of the other things that we're seeing in our society today, I just want to commend you for that. I love the ties, I love the suits, I love the girls in their suits matching. Good job, good job. Yeah.
Golden Hawks, congratulations. They would like a picture, and of course, you don't win these eight competitions every day. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, Proclamation to Jody Lefler, Director of the Adult Education at Bakersfield Adult School, declaring Adult Education Week in Bakersfield during the week of March 20th, 2023.
Well, what a joy it is. It's always exciting for me to go to the adult school and see people so motivated that as adults, they want to go back for their education. We couldn't have a finer director of the adult education program, Jody Lefler. You're just amazing, and you've been there for a number of years and championing. I just love to see the joy on the faces of the students. And so it is my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the State of California will observe Adult Education Week, March 20th through March 24th, 2023, and whereas the Kern High School District, along with its Board of Trustees, acknowledges that the Bakersfield Adult School serves the changing economic and cultural needs of a vigorous, expanding community, and whereas Bakersfield Adult School prepares more than 2,000 students to meet their academic, personal, and professional goals by enrolling in one or more of their diploma GED programs, and whereas Bakersfield Adult School prepares adults to successfully complete the process of becoming new U.S. citizens, and whereas in 2022, 174 adults received their high school diploma, 29 adults earned their GED, and 70 adults at BAS and the Lerdau Detention Facility completed one or more career technical education programs, and whereas in 2022, 224 adults in the Lerdau Detention Facility completed court-ordered parenting and neglect classes to reunite with their families, and BAS graduated another class of its two-year vocational nurse program. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 20th through March 24th, 2023, as Adult Education Week in our city, and salute the administration, teachers, and students of Bakersfield's Adult School, and honor each of them for their efforts and accomplishment, and it's dated this day, and it's signed by... Thank you so much, Mr. Jody. Just so appreciate you.
Thank you.
Please build and make remarks.
Well, I'm actually very happy to be here to accept this award, but I'm also here to give you a little award. So, we have known Karen and her support of adult education for a long time. I'm here today on behalf of Mark Wyatt, our principal, and we have our, my colleague Chad Provensole here tonight, who is a fellow administrator. And we know that when we teach the parent, we teach the child, and this is something that Mayor Go understands. She does this through Garden Pathways. We have partnered with Gavin...
I do that all the time.
I know. So, we have the Lerdau Detention Center, and we partner with various people to help move the adults through and get them to where they need to go, and Garden Pathways has also been a partner, a long partner. So, what I want to do is thank you for the proclamation, but also I wanted to give this to you on behalf of COAB, which is the Coalition on Adult Basic Education. We normally do adult ed nationally in the fall, so in the fall, our team decided that we wanted to nominate Mayor Go. So, this says September, but I talked to Mark, and we said we want to hold it for tonight. So, here it is. And it says, Karen Go is the recipient of the Adult Basic Education Champion Award, September 2022. So, that is on behalf of COAB, and that's on behalf of all of the mayors in the United States.
Thank you so much.
Nominated and given that award. There you go. I took this out here because I just slipped, and I don't want it to fall.
Jody, thank you so much for this, and I just accept it. On behalf of all of us together who support education, thank you again. Well, that was a surprise. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during the other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting outbursts from the audience, or surpassing the two-minute time limit. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the city clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you are here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council cannot take action when your item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received five speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Ray Scott.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Ray Scott, keep Bakersfield beautiful. And really, our success with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is the residents and the collaboration that we have with businesses, social groups, Solid Waste Division, Public Works of Bakersfield. We couldn't do what we do without them. The American Recycles Day, which is held every November here, once again, a collaboration with the Mechanics Bank Arena, is one of the largest American Recycles Day in the country due to the volume of items that we receive that can be recycled, and of course, then, City Public Works and Solid Waste collect a lot of bulky waste items that a lot of times our people will leave for illegal dumping, which really keeps the city clean and beautiful. There's a number of things that Keep Bakersfield Beautiful does because of all these relationships and collaborations that we have, whether it be groups coming and working in Bakersfield. Actually, we've had a number of groups from outside of Bakersfield because they're with the church in Bakersfield and doing projects. We've got everything from all of the electrical boxes that we have throughout the city painted by local artists. Once again, giving Bakersfield a little more beautiful look by local artists. And last year was our 20-year anniversary for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. 250 people showed up for this one-day event luncheon at the Roble Bank Arena Theater, and once again, your city IT department was a massive help with this event. It went off very smoothly because of, once again, the City of Bakersfield staff engaging and collaborating with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. I just want, once again, want to thank you for all of your help, for all of your appointees that serve on the board, but really, it's the residents and the businesses that collaborate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, and we appreciate your service on Keep America Beautiful and Keep California Beautiful. Next speaker, please.
Teresa Olson.
Welcome, Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Teresa Olson, and I'm chairing this year the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, and we would like to have you join us in the Save the Date on the 20th Annual Great American Cleanup. It's going to be Saturday, April 22nd, at Yolkes Park from 8:00 to 1:00 PM. There's going to be a barbecue, and also in the morning, we're going to be having a cleanup by several of the different members that join as volunteers. Maybe this'll go.
Can you stop the clock? Can somebody help her advance the slides, please?
Oh, there you go. Last year, we had a beautiful sign that was put up by one of our sponsors, and as you can see, we have several hundred volunteers that come out and join us in this cleanup between 8:00 and 10:00. At 10:30, we join at Yolkes Park, and we have a barbecue along with awards that we give out to certain special volunteers. We also have, through the next slide, the mayor's challenge, which is for the high schools, and she has challenged last year and this year. She has put out a challenge for them to have teams, and the high school with the most teams will be awarded a trophy. That's a perpetual trophy that will be given to them, and also, the first place winner will get $500. So, we would love to have you all join us and volunteer. The volunteer is opened up on our website at keepbakersfieldbeautiful.us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Olson. We appreciate your service also. And colleagues, I would encourage you to come out and get together with your assigned, your appointees, and let's try to figure out maybe how you can serve in your awards. And just for clarification, the $500 that will be awarded to the high school students is my personal money, no taxpayer dollars. It's not even campaign money. So, please do come out. Thank you again so much. Next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed, followed by Deborah Kessinger Verdugo, followed by Adriana Taverra de Perez.
Welcome, Mr. Turnipseed.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Michael Turnipseed represents the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I'm going to talk tonight about the dealings the last few months and what my feelings are about dealing with government agencies in general. It's a lot easier when you have, you're dealing with organizations that have clear expectations that foster collaboration, that encourage public participation, conduct productivity audits to show the public what they're doing, are accountable, transparent. They conduct their regular scheduled meetings and workshops at times when the public can make it and be available. There has been a rash of special meetings over the last month, and as you look back at them, and they're only posted a day in advance, many of them are not on your webpage. You go to Agendas and Meetings, and they're not there. Special meetings are to address specific topics that require immediate attention and cannot wait for a regular meeting. In my review of all these meetings, none of those meetings fit that criteria. Special meetings are intended to be used sparingly and only when there's a compelling reason to address specific business that cannot wait till the next regularly scheduled meeting. I'd like the council to look at how special meetings are handled and come back with a referral to staff to cut their use to a very minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please.
Deborah Kessinger Verdugo.
Two minutes?
Welcome, Ms. Verdugo.
Good evening, Mayor Go, City Council members. My name is Deborah Verdugo, and along with Susan Stone, we are the Wakayama Committee Cheerpeople for the Bakersfield Sister City Project, and Sue is very sick. Otherwise, she'd be making this presentation because she knows how to do them. Several of you are already very familiar with the Bakersfield Sister City Project and its role in overseeing exchanges between the City of Bakersfield and its five active sister city relationships in Japan, China, Mexico, South Korea, and India. And yes, these relationships are becoming very active again with its first visit this month by the Wakayama Children's Choir, then a trip to Buschan, South Korea, and Wakayama, Japan in May, and a student exchange in Buschan in late July from our students going there, with other exchanges still in the planning stages. The oldest of these affiliations is with the City of Wakayama, Japan, with whom we are now celebrating 62 years of friendship and the renewal of exchanges that were made necessary by the pandemic. And what could be a better way to celebrate this joyful revival other than with music, the universal language, right, Mrs. Go? Karen Go? On March 28th, 24 members of the Wakayama Children's Choir will return to Bakersfield for their first visit since 1917. They first came in 1977. This is their 11th visit. It will be a very brief three-day visit filled with many activities, but the highlight of their stay will be a free evening concert on Thursday, March 30th, at Centennial High School, including Julie's daughter and the choir. The Children's Choir will be joined by the Seattle Singing Hawks. We are certain that it will be a wonderful celebration of music and fellowship.
Thank you, Ms. Verdugo. Can you just bring your comments to a close? There's a little...
Oh, is it already two minutes?
It's already two minutes, but thank you so much.
Okay, I'll leave my stuff with Julie.
We very much appreciate your service. I know you've served for years and years with Wakayama, and we have such a wonderful relationship with that sister city. Thank you again.
We appreciate you, also.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Adriana Taverra de Perez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Adriana Taverra, and I'm a USA citizen, and I'm the... My name is Adriana Taveras, and I'm a USA citizen, and I'm the homeowner of a house located on Nerman Avenue. Nerman Avenue is a street located behind Bali Plaza, is the street behind the mall. I'm here representing my whole block, and the residents of Nerman Avenue would like to request two things. The first one is re-concreted or we love street because we have a lot of potholes, and we've been having a lot of problems with flat tires. And even though we reported on the app and they come and they fix that pole, a new one keep coming and keep coming, we've been talking with our neighbors, and, you know, some of them have the same issue. And it seems the last time the street was re-concreted is back in 2013. We notice our crossing street is having new sidewalks. That's something else that whenever the funds will be available, or if there's any left, we will also request it. And this is a special attention to Eric Arias because he's our council. Also, Nerman Avenue is a highly transitated street due to the near location of Bali Plaza. We have all ages from kids who will love to ride a bike or go walking to Wilson Park, adults or elderly who enjoy walking to the mall. I have neighbors in front of my house who really, there's a couple, they go and they walk every day since they got married. But they have to get out of the street because we don't have sidewalks. At least 14 or 15 houses do not have it. And I believe somebody else was talking about beautification on the city. That's something that will also help and also will provide...
Ms. Taveras, your time's up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Go ahead and give that. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Taveras, for coming tonight. I really appreciate you coming. Historically, it has not been my privilege to represent these communities just south of the Bali Plaza, but it is now my honor, through the last redistricting process last year, to now represent those communities. And so, some of these are new issues and new communities, and I'm really looking forward to establishing a relationship and learning about the many challenges and beautiful aspects of your neighborhood. So with that, I would like to ask Greg if we could connect with our streets team to take a look at those potholes, and let's utilize, you know, if there's any available Ward 1 monies that's been set aside for some of that infrastructure development. If we can't do it this year, then let's make sure that it's a priority for the next cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments Item 6A, Appointment of One Regular Member, Ward 1, due to the resignation of General Lee Furman and one alternate committee member, also Ward 1, to complete a term to expire December 2026 to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee. Applications for appointment were received from Cornelio Gutierrez Lozano, Manuel Ramirez, Noe Garcia, Brian Stevens, Jordan Webster, Rosando Sorato.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward, therefore, no ballots are required. Councilmember Arias, I'd like to call on you now for your nominations for your regular and alternate committee members.
Thank you, Mayor. It is bittersweet that General Lee Furman has resigned. She came on last year to be my representative for KBB. She did a tremendous job hosting numerous community cleanups, and she did a great job with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, so I just want to thank her for her service. But I also want to nominate two aspiring young leaders, Noe Garcia, who is a proud member of Ward 1, is a proud graduate as well of UCLA and a Gates Millennium Scholar, and continues to serve young people through a local nonprofit. And I also want to recognize who's here tonight, Manuel Manny Ramirez, who's become one of my good friends. He's a proud member of the historic Ward 1 before redistricting took place. He has served for many, many years, those marginalized in our community through various nonprofits. And he has, most recently, actually serves as my appointee to the MLK Park Reimagination Project. He did a fabulous job there, and I know that he will continue to serve well in KBB. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Smith absent.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for your service. And Mr. Ramirez, if you would stand up, we would like to just recognize you and thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7AM for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding Item 7N, requesting that it be removed from tonight's consideration.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any member of the council wish to recuse themselves from an item? Councilmember Freeman.
I will recuse myself from Item 7U.
7U, thank you. Does any member of the council wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
With the corrections noted, please.
With the correction for, yes, with the corrections made, 7N.
With the correction of 7N.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Councilmember Freeman, you may vote on that. It's simply you've recused yourself, and so the clerk should note that your vote is a yes on all items with the exception of the item that you recused yourself on.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Smith absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business Item 12A, Fiscal Year 2023, 2223 Midyear Budget Recommendations. Fiscal Year Item Number 1, Fiscal Year 202223 PSVS Midyear Budget Additional Detail as outlined in Exhibit A. 2, Fiscal Year 202223 Midyear Budget Adjustments and Appropriations as outlined in Exhibit B. And Number 3, Fiscal Year 202223 Midyear Budget Appropriations as outlined in Exhibit C.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This presentation that's before you tonight is a follow-up to a preliminary budget conversation for midyear that was discussed at February 8, a City Council meeting. And also, we have had a meeting of the Public Safety and Vital Services Tax Oversight Committee since that time as well. In quick summary, we have not made significant adjustments to the midyear budget. I'll walk through them quickly, but it's the same with the exception of the request from Councilmember Freeman to include additional funding in response to the Endangered Species Act challenges that may be faced with the expiration of our Habitat Conservation Plan. Really quickly, though, oops, I wanted to reflect on this again, that for the current year, we continue to see that we're trending on target. One piece of good news is that one month ago, we had reported that we were seeing our PSVS revenues come in potentially a little bit lower than anticipated. The latest update from our sales tax consultants, it looks like we're going to be about on track again on that one, so that's some slight good news. The reality, though, is we made very conservative estimates this year, and we are looking at next year also, assuming that our revenues are going to be very flat, and we'll cover that more in our annual budgeting process. Again, we did see year-end balances in both the general fund and in the Public Safety and Vital Services tax revenues, largely because we received more revenues than expected, as well as some expenditures that didn't occur that were under budget, some of that due to vacancies, but the larger portion is, again, good news and revenues beyond budgeted. So these are, again, the same points as last time around. There are some strategic allocations that we think are worthwhile of the one-time funds in the Public Safety and Vital Services tax. We are from existing resources requesting the one position for illegal dumping enforcement, and then no additional changes for new expenditures for general fund, enterprise funds, and that our mantra or theme continues to be to have set-asides and contingencies for this coming year with the potential of economic downturn. What is specifically on the table for the Public Safety and Vital Services tax is the $7.6 million of recommendations. Again, out of that $19 million sum, we're recommending go into reserves, but the balance between that and the 7.6 we're recommending goes into contingency for next fiscal year. I'll walk through each one of these category areas. Again, as a reminder, we're continuing to pay back our police training facility. We determined that we do need some of the funds received to help us pursue a real property opportunity nearby, but it's a reduced amount than what you saw at February 8 because we were able to reduce that in order to make space for the recommendation of Councilmember Freeman. Related to homelessness, this, again, represents the recommendations that were most actionable coming out of our October 19 workshop of the City Council, and those programs that we think could continue to make an impact in this area. Oh, and you have in your information a revised Exhibit A that, for the details for each of these expenditures, that also reflects the feedback from the Public Safety and Vital Services Tax Oversight Committee. That has been our practice that as we have them take votes on items, it's not just a simple vote, but if they have individuals who are in the minority on any particular vote, they can provide some of the feedback as to why they voted for or against an item. And so I wanted to reflect for the council because our meeting was just yesterday with that Oversight Committee, and you have very recently received those notes. There was support on the police facility, and this category of homelessness, it was a tie vote, four to four, on the committee as to whether or not these items were consistent with the 13 priorities. I would respectfully suggest to the council that homelessness very clearly is listed amongst the 13 priorities for the Public Safety and Vital Services tax measure. There were some questions by committee members of individual items on this list, whether or not they deemed those to be effective uses or priority uses of those funds, but again, respectfully, the role of the committee is to determine whether those are consistent with the 13 categories, which, again, I would suggest homelessness is. There were questions about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as to whether or not that was an effective use of resources, as well as the family reunification, as to whether or not that was effective use of resources. On this next item, again, this is just keeping track with our two-month reserve target. It's a good practice, and again, just for the viewing public's benefit, we're one of only three cities, of the large cities in the state of California, to be meeting the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation for two months' working cash, and this was supported by the Oversight Committee. Last item, were taken up individually by the Oversight Committee. Again, as reminders, we have had a shortfall in our operating costs at the shelter, and it's having impacts to our live release rates, it's having impacts to animal care, costs are significantly up, and so we do feel like this is consistent with our public safety and quality of life categories for the measure, although, again, this one was a split vote on supporting this from the standpoint of the Oversight Committee. The park improvements, again, this is to address many of those small park upgrades or amenities or improvements that happen throughout the year that are distinct from, let's say, a full resurfacing project or a full playground rehab project. And again, this one had some dissenting votes from the committee, although a split opinion there. And then lastly, our Endangered Species Act funding, this is what was requested by Councilmember Freeman, we've included those dollars there. This one ultimately was supported, but there were dissenting votes that questioned the use of our Public Safety and Vital Services tax funds in support of addressing government mandates. But again, I would suggest that this is in direct response to economic development goals and priorities within the measure for the City Council. This is just a graph that shows, again, that this is largely, that this midyear action is largely in response to our, you know, continued urgent need to address homelessness as much as possible, and you see a big chunk there also for reserves and fiscal solvency. This just is the detail behind that action that I mentioned of the code enforcement officer that will be addressing illegal dumping specifically, and this is how we arrive at being able to do that from within existing funds without additional budget allocation. And then a few wrap-up items that are just included in our midyear action. We did receive additional monies for our land conservancy grant. That's just good news that we have to appropriate those additional dollars. We're not asking council tonight of how we use those dollars. We'll have to come back with actions to council for where to use those funds likely on other park projects, or to further, you know, make improvements at this specific project, but we are appropriating those funds at this time to bring them into our budget. So in summary, we have those three key actions, our one-time appropriations, the additional position, and the additional grant monies. Happy to answer any questions. This is just a foreshadowing of the busy season ahead of us with many meetings, both with the Oversight Committee as well as the City Council in annual budget preparation.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a few comments tonight. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Clegg and your team for all of the work that has been exercised to develop this midyear budget, and also for bringing this to the council early on to give us an opportunity to provide some feedback. I think that's a really important step to this process, and I appreciate you recognizing some of the comments that my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, has made over the years, as well as myself. I think that's a really important practice. I do want to make some comments related to the Public Safety and Vital Services Oversight Committee. I had an opportunity to spend an hour in the audience during their meeting. I am a bit puzzled by some of the feedback that the committee provided, particularly as it relates to our objective to address homelessness in this community. There's a question among some committee members that perhaps, I'm trying to find the words here, PSVS funding requests do not quite align with the objectives stated in the sales tax measure. I do want to point the public, though, to the 13 specific priorities that would be addressed and are addressed through the implementation of the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. One of them is, and I will read, "to reduce homelessness through partnerships with service providers to increase outreach, sheltering, and construction of affordable housing." So I want to push back respectfully that, in fact, our expenditures related to reducing homelessness and the construction of affordable housing are, in fact, in perfect alignment with the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. I also will note that another objective is to enhance neighborhoods through additional code enforcement and improved park maintenance, and to enhance amenities throughout the community to improve the quality of life and attract visitors. So, in fact, our contributions and investments in recreation and parks is also in alignment with the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. And I think it's important that we move forward with tonight's recommendations so that we can better deliver services and improvements, all these wonderful improvements that we've been making over the last few years, that we can... continue to do that for the citizens of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clegg, I just have a few kind of clarification questions. The first is on the family unification, the $300,000 for that. Is that money we give to an existing group that then will hire some new people, those won't be city employees, they will be one of the groups that we contribute to? Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. You're right, this is the perfect type of program that we can contract out to entities that already work in this space and do a good job. That funding amount, you know, I think it's incumbent on us to do some kind of a competitive process. We'll do a request for proposals and, you know, make, offer some opportunity for them to respond for how they would propose to staff it, but our assumption is it would be some new individuals at one of our community partners that successfully would propose on how to use those funds, but we will, we'll contract it out.
I mean, is this something that, once you start a program, that, well, will we evaluate, hey, did it work, so it's going to become a permanent expenditure every year? I mean, it sounds like a good idea when you put it on paper. The question is, you know, can we really do it? Will we be able to, you know, reunify families, get people on buses back to LA to meet their family? You know, I don't think anybody minds paying for the bus ticket or paying to help find these people. I just wasn't sure that, has anybody done this before and had a program? So, you know, we found a town that's doing it, and this is how they do it. Do we have that information, or is this going to be more exploratory at first?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. We do have that information, and that was actually a request of some members of the Oversight Committee as well, to be provided that information, and we'll get that to them. There are several cities that have implemented programs like this. The city of San Francisco has been doing this for probably more than five years. They've actually relocated 10,000 individuals since their, you know, program began. We initiated a pilot in this last year. We had some, I think it was some CDBG dollars. So we did a small $35,000 pilot on this, and we've been able to relocate, I think, a little north of 20 individuals in the last year plus. And so we know it can happen. But I think to your other point, you know, we think that it's good to do this for maybe a one- or two-year term. Take a pause, evaluate, because it is a ramping up effort. Do we find that, you know, two-plus years down the road, does it need to be quite as much? Maybe, you know, maybe this hires two to four individuals. Well, can we cut that in half over time as we make progress? We'll have to reevaluate that.
Yeah, well, I noticed it said, I think it said like five people, which is a fairly big team. I'm not sure you can, the labor force, probably you can even find five people who are competent and qualified to do this type of work, because I think this is, you know, a person, fairly skilled person to be able to go out and do this. So maybe it'd be nice if you could report back to us in, I don't know, six months. Is this working out? Did we really have to hire five? Should we start with two or three? I mean, we're saying there's three, and we don't have to use it all, because if you say it's successful, then it's going to become an ongoing expense. You could say, and, you know, if, if you did spend $300,000, and you could say, we got 30 people back to their homes, well, given it's costing us, depending on which report we get on the homeless shelter, our total, which is causing us $16,000 to $25,000 a year per person through the homeless shelters. So it would definitely save us money if the person was able to return home, and, you know, they're permanently taken care of. So those are my comments there. A question on the allocation of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I don't mind putting money into the trust fund. I wanted to ask, within the trust fund, when we put monies in there, is that spent for just building new apartments, or do we use that for, you know, when we remodel a home motel? Do we use it to subsidize rents? What are all the things we do? One comment is that, it seems to me, unless it's a 100% grant that someone else gives us, building new housing, we saw two or three last year, they range from $250,000 per unit for a stripped-down, bare-bones apartment. Councilman Smith is building luxury apartments, by the way, at twice the size for that amount, he said. So, and the other program was $500,000 a unit. So we're not going to get hardly any units ever for those costs, so they don't make sense really to build them. What I'm wondering is, these monies, can they be spent for rent vouchers for the remodeled, like you said, motels? But for things that give us a lot more leverage than getting, you know, what they said last year, I don't know if that gives us five and a half units, or 10? The cost is so outrageous. It's prevailing wage, and there must be a lot of other people with their hands in that pot to be able to even come close to spending this much, because nobody, you know, you can build luxury apartments for less. I'll quit talking. Maybe you can enlighten me, how do we use these funds?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Freeman and Mayor and Council. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund policy, when we first established it, listed out several different eligible expenditures out of that fund. Now, historically, especially the first couple of years that we did that, we did a notice of funding availability, we put out basically, you know, a request for people to submit projects. We mostly got really big multifamily projects. But we recognize that that's not the only way, or potentially even the most cost-effective way to create more units. And so the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can pay for infill development, small duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units. It can pay for hotel conversions, you know, to your point. It actually does not include rental assistance. That was a particular question point at the time. It can be-
We cannot use these funds for that?
Yeah, correct, as currently outlined. Now, you know, this policy was adopted at a time where we were still, you know, somewhat coming out of the pandemic, and there were rental assistance dollars that were available from the, you know, federal treasury. And we also have an ongoing rental assistance program that we've been able to carry forward with some remaining ESG funds.
Do we get enough money? I don't usually see that in the annual budget. Do we get enough money from the federal government or ongoing grants to adequately fund the rental assistance? And that's one question. And if it's our own policy, if the council ever wanted to, could we modify our policy to say that the trust fund could be used for rental assistance?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Freeman. There are a couple of different questions in there. And to the last point, yes, of course, the council can revise our policy to include rental assistance. And I would also, you know, there's different terms that are used, like rapid rehousing or homelessness prevention. Those are valuable programs, because once someone becomes chronically homeless, it may cost a lot more to bring them out of homelessness and into permanent supportive housing. So it is a worthy consideration. To your other questions, I would argue, no. As a region, we do not receive enough funds to meet all the demands of those that are wanting rental assistance, so that they don't perhaps, you know, become more at risk of homelessness. And it is a fairly complicated scenario, and something, you know, that I think has been addressed and could be addressed further at the Housing and Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee, because we're not the only recipients of funding. So there's some funding goes to the county, some funding goes to the city, some funding actually comes through our continuum of care, our Regional Homeless Collaborative. And then collectively, we do share out those funds to some of our different housing providers. For example, the Open Door Network does have a rapid rehousing program that helps get people back into rental units, so they don't become homeless, and those aren't necessarily direct city funds. But we don't actually deploy a lot of funds at the city level for rental assistance.
I might want to learn more about that in the future, because I think that's probably a major need, and maybe we should have our own fund or something. A couple other quick questions. The animal shelter, did we simply not budget enough? We've talked about the animal shelter. We had a, we had a project to build a kennel and other stuff, which I think maybe the only one voted against it, because I didn't think it was a good use of money. But has the kennel project gone, or no, this isn't, that's at the homeless shelter. This is just the animal shelter. And did we not budget for this this year, or are we under-budgeting to take care of the animal shelter properly? What's going on?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Freeman. And I think no good manager likes to say that we didn't plan well enough. But I guess in our $700 million budget, this is just one of about two or three items that we've saying, we think we need to, you know, put more money towards those. The contract that we have with the SPCA to manage our shelter, as we prepared our budget last year, I would say that we did not anticipate enough some of the increases in the costs for them to provide medicines and treatments. And, you know, there's inflation that's affecting a lot of things, but we found that veterinary care services costs have risen much more than other areas of general inflation as well. So we are under-budgeted in the animal control contract that we have. The amount of the $300,000 is actually, that's not the full amount of the shortfall, it's closer to about half of that amount. The other half of that is to help with some of those capital projects there at that location to get things in better shape.
Okay. Last question, the $300 to park amenities. Again, we tried to identify every single park that needed to be renovated in the last two years' budgets. We were hoping we didn't miss any. Did we miss some, or is that why we just didn't have this in the regular budget?
Yeah, so, and I'll try and be succinct, but some of the history on this one is that for, for many of the small repairs at parks, we've never actually included a capital line item for some of those smaller repairs, like, let's say, a drinking fountain gets vandalized. We have to replace the drinking fountain, or a garbage can gets burned out, we have to replace that garbage can.
You're kind of mentioning items of damage. Is this more to repair things that individuals have damaged?
That's a big portion of it. I will suggest too, though, you know, if we notice, you know, it would make a big difference to put one extra picnic table at a park that's getting a higher utilization. We don't really, we haven't really had a capital line item for those small things. And Director Anthony recognized that last year and said, we really ought to put some money in the budget to do those small things. We actually put half a million dollars in the budget for this current year. We've almost spent all of that down. Part of that, I think, is because we have had a lot of vandalism, we've had a lot of those repairs. But also with the park rangers on board, we've, we've gone and installed, like, gates at all of the parks that have an internal parking lot that can be closed at night. So we've spent those funds down, you know, faster than anticipated, and we think it's, it's a good investment to keep up on those small things that keep our parks nice.
I don't disagree. One last question. Are all of our bathrooms in our public parks locked at night?
So the park rangers have actually given us the ability to go out and do that on a regular basis. The simple answer is yes.
Yes, they're going to be, or?
No, yes, they are locked at night. We actually, they actually vary the times of which parks lock at which times based on activity and use.
Are they locked in a way that a vandal can't really get in? Or do we have to replace a bunch of locks with better locks?
They, they're, for the most part, yes. There are some very persistent, creative folks who have broken into some of our locked bathrooms, and we have to, had to go back and replace them with stronger locks, or with those metal plates around the locks. But for the most part, we keep folks out.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray. Just canceled. I don't see any other requests to speak at this point. Is there a motion to take action on this?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt the fiscal year '22, '23 mid-year budget recommendations.
Thank you. If motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Smith absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Gray.
Good evening, everyone. As we're talking about different challenges and vandalism, and then we were talking about illegal dumping earlier tonight, we are continuing to face those challenges, and illegal dumping, dumping has been one of those where it's a huge eyesore to our city when we drive down the road, and there's a mattress lane in the middle of the road. So in a continued effort to improve our tools for addressing illegal dumping, can staff review the city's municipal code to identify any updates that would allow code enforcement officers the authority they need to expedite the illegal dumping citation process, and build a case off of the evidence present, and allow the city to collect costs against these violations?
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I don't see any other requests to speak. Do we have some members of the grand jury here? Thank you again for your service. I know you were there at the PSVS meeting, and it's a lot of work to serve on that grand jury. So just thank you so much, and we appreciate it. With that, we stand adjourned at 6:36.